Good evening and welcome to the Twinsburg Board of Education regular meeting of Wednesday, April 4th, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
And if you could please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for attending. Starting April 9th with absentee voting and on May 8th at the polls, the district will be asking for your support in passing issue 3, our 6.9 mil renewal levy that has been in effect and successfully renewed every five years since 1993. This levy represents over 10% of our annual budget and allows us to offer the great programs and wraparound services that help our students excel and be celebrated like the many students here tonight. The administration and board understand our responsibility to the community with the financial support that we are given, and we continue, as we have for many years, to remain prudent in our spending and planning for the future. Our per pupil spending continues to be lower than our surrounding communities, even as we offer expanded programming and unbelievable opportunities only available in our district. Our schools continue to receive state and national recognition and awards, and our students continue to amaze me with their academic and extracurricular achievements in athletics, fine arts, and music. As we near the election, there are many opportunities for you to help us in garnering support of this levy through the Blue Ribbon Committee. There are volunteer opportunities for poll workers, handing out flyers at school events, and of course, our pancake breakfast on April 15th. I'd ask that you join us that Sunday morning and enjoy some freshly made pancakes served by our staff and members of our board as we celebrate the district and our students. Much to our disappointment, HB 512 continues to move forward in Columbus, and we continue to advocate on behalf of our district and students to ensure that our voices are heard. I've continued to ask for your help in convincing our elected officials that HB 512 is an ill-conceived bill created with little to no input from stakeholders that it will affect the most and an overreaching attempt at education reform. And as we have a lot to celebrate tonight, I will end my report and hand the meeting over to Superintendent Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Solera. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families and staff. It is so great to see everyone here this evening. We certainly do have a lot to celebrate tonight, and before we get into the meat of my comments, I would like to just gloat a little bit about my colleague over here, Mr. Marty Aho. Those of you know that Marty is our district's treasurer, and trust me, he keeps me on the straight and narrow most days. We're usually talking about different projects and funds of revenue and what we need to do to make sure that the district is well taken care of when it comes to the district's financial picture. This evening, we are celebrating with Marty and with the staff from our treasurer's department, so I'd like to ask very kindly if Mr. Marty Aho can come forward in front of the table, and also John Frammartino, who is our assistant treasurer. John, if you'd please come forward, and Donna Kelly, please come forward, Amy Vargo, and These five individuals really make sure every single day that our district runs as financially prudent as we can, make sure that we're paying attention to the bottom line, and their attention to detail with regard to accounting is second to none. And this evening, we are just delighted that we have a special guest from the Auditor of State's office, and I'd like to ask Ms. Kuhn to please come forward. Because of the diligent efforts of these five individuals led by my colleague and friend Marty Aho, the district has so much to celebrate and this time is talking about the financial picture. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, thank you. Thank you all. My name is Lindsay Kuhn, and I am here on behalf of Auditor Dave Yost. No tomatoes, please. This is a wonderful opportunity for me to be here yet again. I was teasing your treasurer because this, he's what I like to refer to as a good repeat offender in that he has received this, he and his team have received this time and again. We audit about a little over 6,000 government entities across the state of Ohio each year, and a little under 12% actually receive the award that I'm here to present this evening. It is the gold standard. It is the absolute highest achievement that you can earn from our office, which is the award with distinction. And, you know, just to kind of echo what you all were currently saying is that, you know, the day-to-day finances for you and I that aren't financially minded, we might not understand, you know, well, we hope that everything reconciles at the end of the day, all the numbers crunch and, you know, things look good, but there's so much more in terms of the audit process regarding the compliance aspect. It is, just like everything in education, it's ever-changing, but then you add in all the numbers and the regulations and the compliance aspect, and it truly takes experts at the helm to understand and to keep your school district in the best grace as possible. So with that being said, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do want to read some of the juicy parts of the letter from the great auditor. This means obviously that you did have a clean audit, that they did not have, you all did not have any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or questionable costs. And again, this goes back to that compliance aspect, and it's really a feather in your cap as a district, as an administration, as a board, that you have folks that are working hand-in-hand together. This is a team effort. It is everyone working together in concert and communicating well, and so we really appreciate it from the Ohio Auditor's Office. Again, not everybody receives this, and we certainly appreciate the fact that you all are excellent stewards of taxpayer dollars. So thank you very much, and I'll present you with this certificate.
Ms. Kuhn, we sincerely appreciate the recognition by the State Auditor's Office, but, you know, Marty and Amy and Donna and John and Sue, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you so very much for taking care of the finances here in the school district top-notch manner. You make sure that our budgets are sound, that our purchase orders are done in the appropriate manner, and you're making sure that our bottom line is solid. So on behalf of the Board and our community, we thank you so very much for all that you do that make our district so great. Congratulations. That's going to be difficult to tap, but we're going to try. On Board of Education, as you know, that kindergarten registration is just around the corner, and parents of students who will be turning five years of age before August 1st of 2018 are asked to visit the district website and to click on the "For Parents" tab, scrolling down to "Access Registration Information." Once you are there, you're to ask to create an account, and then you'll be asked to complete the preregistration information. And once you have done that, you'll be able to schedule an appointment for kindergarten registration, which is going to be held this year on May 9th, 10th, and 11th at the Twinsburg Community Center. But again, you'll need to complete the preregistration process online and schedule your appointment online before the registration. As always, feel free to contact Wilcox Primary School if you have questions about the registration process, and we look forward to meeting our class of 2031 during kindergarten registration this year. So the class of 2018 is almost done, and the class of 2031 is just about ready to start. So that's how it goes in a school district. Board of Education, I was asked by our friends at Cable 9 to let our community know that they will broadcast the program we hosted in March, a community conversation about school safety. That will be broadcast throughout the month of April on Cable 9, on Tuesdays at 8:00 PM, on Fridays at 10:30 PM, and again on Saturdays at 1:00 PM. If you missed the opportunity to come to the high school to actually hear the program in person, please take a bit of time to listen to the broadcast. We had some great conversation with our local law enforcement folks, members of our staff, that will provide a lot of information to our residents about school safety. So again, we appreciate Cable 9 for being such a great partner with us and providing that opportunity for our community members. Also, Board of Education, I'd like to remind you and our district that we are going to be co-hosting the next in our series of community conversations, and this one's called "A Community Conversation About Adolescent Mental Health," and that's going to be on Thursday, April 12th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the high school. This program will be a panel discussion with panelists from Beechbrook, the Cleveland Clinic, the Summit County Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services, or we call them the ADM Board, the Summit County Suicide Prevention Coalition, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, also called NAMI, Life Act, and the Twinsburg Police Department, as well as members of our staff too. And the panelists will discuss mental health topics including anxiety, depression, and suicide prevention. And, you know, this seems to be a conversation that we hear a lot about, not only in our community, but statewide and nationally. So we invite our parents of all of our students from pre-K all the way through 12. If you have an interest in this topic or would like to have more information, please join us on April 12th at 7:00 PM at the high school. And before the panel actually begins, there will be a community resource fair where you'll be able to pick up some information from any of the panelists that are serving as panelists that evening. So we look forward to a really good next community conversation. And this time, I would also like to thank our Director of Pupil Services, Denise Stratbegon, who is here. It is out of her office that these kinds of programs are developed and then implemented and hosted here in the district, so thank you Denise for your efforts behind the scene. Okay, so now it's time to think about running, and not on a day where it's snowy, but obviously it is spring, and the annual Twinsburg Tiger Spirit Run is right around the corner, and that is Sunday, April 15th at 9:30 AM at Tiger Stadium. Please mark this date on your calendar and plan to come out and have some fun and fitness with our staff and with each other. The registration form for the Twinsburg Tiger Spirit Run can be found via our website on the Flyer Central link, and $1 from each registration will be donated to our partners in our Paws on Child Hunger Program at the Emergency Assistance Center. And of course, after a spirited run, we hope everyone runs on over to the high school and enjoys some delicious pancakes sponsored by the Blue Ribbon Committee. So it looks like it's going to be a fun Sunday, and then after you have your pancake breakfast, stick around at the high school because our Great Expectations Show Choir will be performing Chorus Line. So you can virtually spend the whole day on April 15th with us, a spirited fun run, pancake breakfast, and then watch the show Chorus Line by our Great Expectations. And if you've never seen Great Expectations perform, you're not going to want to miss it. So that again is Sunday, April 15th, 9:30 fun run, pancakes till 1:00, and I believe Show Choir's Chorus Line begins at 2:00. So it'll be a great day up here at the high school. So we have so many things to celebrate this evening, and we're going to begin by celebrating our students from Samuel Bissell Elementary School. And boys and girls, you had an interesting start to your day, didn't you today, to our delay with this power problem that we had? But I'm glad to see you here this evening, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Johnson to please come forward, and Mr. Winter, who want to celebrate with some outstanding Tigers from Samuel Bissell Elementary School.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
Hello, hello, hello.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. I know it's extremely cold outside, and the wind is blowing, and the snow is blowing, and it's April 4th, and we still have our coats on like it's December, but we're about to warm your hearts right now to some of the, we celebrate our students, so we're so excited for that. That delayed start did throw us off this morning. I think the students were off, the staff was off, I was off. You came in this morning like, what is going on? Because you're used to a delayed start when there's a lot of snow outside. You're not used to it when it's not so much snow outside, so the power outage was really different for us. But we made it. It turned out to be a very good day. What'd you say?
I agree.
All right. So let's celebrate. At Samuel Bissell Elementary School, our Students of the Month are selected by our teachers and for these various reasons. The Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement in second and third grades. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set these students apart from their peers. So at this time, we will recognize our second graders. And second graders, when I call your name, the first thing you're going to do is you're going to walk up, you're going to shake hands with Mrs. Powers and also with Mr. Solera, and then you're going to come around and you're going to give me a hug, and then you're going to shake hands with Mr. Winter. He's going to present you with a nice certificate, and if you would, just stand right up front so we can get pictures of your beautiful smiles. Okay? So let's get started with second grade. So our first second graders from Mr. Rolles' class, Gabby Caricello. Gabby Caricello, come on up. Remy Cummings from Ms. Walensky's class. Oliver Etahi from Mr. Harrison's class. Alex, let me say this, Marturo Cian.
Yes.
Thank you. And it's funny because during the announcements, we say it, we say all our students on the announcements in the morning, and I said to Alex, I said to everybody, "Congratulations, Alex." I said, "Alex, when you get down here, make sure you help Mrs. Johnson with your last name, and then I will pronounce it correctly after you come down." And he did just that, so that was awesome. And now we have Leah Merzweiler from Mrs. Halliday's class. And Alana Young from Ms. Comrade's class. At this time, if we can give our second graders a round of applause. Nice job, second graders. Let's see those teeth. Cheese. All right, nice job. We're so proud of you, second graders, and we cannot wait till Friday so we can have our pizza and have a good time together. So congratulations. You can head back to your seat at this time. And our third graders, we're going to start with Henry Chapman from Mrs. Depew's class. And Kayden Silverstein from Mrs. Engler's class. At this time, can we give our third graders a round of applause? I love it. Show those teeth. Nice job. Congratulations, and I can't wait to have lunch with you as well on Friday, so that's super exciting. Nice job, guys. You'll have a seat at this time. Nice job. Oh, we forgot to call your name.
Good start, Mr. Curtis. Nothing gets by Mr. Curtis.
At this time, I would like to call Mrs. Golnick to the front. Mrs. Golnick to the front. Students of the Month, if you could wait till right after we do this, I just want to take a picture before you leave. Okay? Thank you. I want you to come over here. So as Mrs. Golnick is coming up, we also celebrate our Staff of the Month, and they are nominated by other staff colleagues, and so I would like to read to you about Mrs. Golnick. We would like to nominate Mrs. Golnick, Bissell's newest instructional assistant, as Staff Member of the Month. She has quickly become a valuable and much appreciated member of our Bissell family. Mrs. G., as we call her, is patient, creative, and flexible. She is always willing to learn new strategies and effective ways that support classroom instruction. We love that all of our students always want to work with Mrs. G., and they get so excited when she comes in the classroom. She comes up with fun and exciting ways to teach concepts that students often struggle with. She is always prepared, and she has her bag of tricks, to help get the kids excited about what they are learning. We admire her patience and her kindness that she shows to the students and the staff every day. Mrs. G. always has a positive attitude when working with our students. We are all so fortunate to have her at Bissell. And that was written by Mrs. Engler, Mrs. Finn, and Ms. Babcock. Congratulations, Mrs. G. So before we turn the mic over to Mrs. Powers, I just want to give a huge thank you to our families. For the American Heart Association, we do jump rope our hearts under the direction of Mrs. Haynes and Mr. Schwed. And because of our families, our students and our staff, we raised $15,190.48 for the American Heart Association. So I would just like to publicly thank all of our families because that money can help so many. So I thank you, thank you, thank you for your generous donation. Thank you. That's all we have from Bissell.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Winter. Always a pleasure to celebrate with our Bissell Tigers. And now we'd like to shift gears and ask Mr. Reese and Mrs. Moore to come forward to celebrate RBC Chamberlain Tigers. Good evening.
I'll start with what's going on at RBC before we do our certificates. We're very busy at RBC at this time. Spring supposedly has started, so we have baseball, softball, and we have over 200 students on the track team, so that's going to be fun. And drama clubs, practicing orchestra, band, getting ready for performances. So the students are busy, as well as making sure they complete every assignments like we do at RBC. We had our last Tiger Day where the students were amazing. They performed in a talent show. So the students look forward to that. All of that had, were able to attend because they had all of their assignments completed and their behavior met the expectations. So we're real happy today to have our Students of the Month, and when we call your name, you'll be coming up. Our students are receiving the honor of Student of the Month for being recognized for the following criteria. Showing respect and consideration for others. Shows enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities. Exerts a positive influence on classmates. Exhibits leadership characteristics, patriotism, and democratic principles, and show responsibility. The following seventh and eighth grade students are our Students of the Month for RBC. Seventh grade, Dorcas Falakken. Is she here? Next, Abhiram Shandru. Is he here? Nicole Stroop. Once it gets cold, I don't know about these older students. Okay, for seventh grade. Now, eighth grade, let's see if anyone has come out of the cold. Isabella Genovese? Yes! And Veer Godani. Is he here? Thank you, eighth graders. Let's give our eighth graders a round of applause for being Students of the Month.
Thank you.
Let's give our eighth grade students a little photo opportunity here. Guys, hold up your certificates. I know your parents would like this for your scrapbook, I'm sure. And, you know, I was just at RBC earlier today, and Mr. Reese and I were in the lunchroom, and I said, "What an exciting place. There's so much energy and so much enthusiasm at the middle school." So guys, you are three of a bunch of wonderful students. Thank you for representing them so well, and thank you for your efforts. We really appreciate you. Congratulations. Mr. Solera, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any committee reports? All right. This is a good time break. I appreciate everybody coming out and sharing your children and their great accomplishments with us. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome. Otherwise, I know there's probably homework at dinner to get home to, so thank you again. I don't see, Marty, do we have any blue cards? Item G, without objection from my colleagues, I'll read items G1 through 3. G1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, special meeting of March 10th, 2018, and regular meeting of March 21st, 2018, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item G2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial reports for the month of February 2018, bank reconciliation, general fund financial summary report, and financial report by fund, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Item G3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check register for the month of January 2018. The total, including payroll, is $4,126,547.19, and the month of February 2018, the total, including payroll, is $3,974,286.90. To have a motion to accept items G1 through 3. Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, any discussion on items G1 through 3? Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Items G1 through 3, pass 5-0. Agenda item H, without the objection from my colleagues, I will read items H1 and 2. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education- I'll read items H1 and 2. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion for items H1 and 2.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second? Any discussion? Mrs. Powers, I believe you have some. Some more you'd like to say?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Solara. Board of Education, as you know, Mrs. Tringold has made the decision that she will be retiring at the end of this school year.
And although we will never replace Mrs. Tringold as the person she is, we know that the high school needs a leader to take our students on to the next great thing that is in store for them. And so back in January, once Mrs. Tringold had determined that she was going to retire as the principal at Twinsburg High School, the Board of Education asked that we would post for the position of Twinsburg High School principal. We were ecstatic with the number of applicants. More than fifty applications from around the country came in, actually. And often, Mr. Reese will tell me that Twinsburg City School District is a destination school district, and I think by what happened with the applications, that is certainly the case here. Before we even looked at those applications, however, we engaged our stakeholders in what we call listening sessions, because we know that we can't make the decision of hiring the next principal of Twinsburg High School in a vacuum. We wanted to hear from our parents, our students, our classified staff members, our certificated staff members, the district administrative team, as well as the Board of Education, as to what you thought were the characteristics and qualities of the next principal at Twinsburg High School. Once we had collected all that information, we began the paper screening of those more than fifty applications. And then we whittled those fifty applications down to ten. At that point, the central office administrative team did the first round of interviews, and we interviewed ten individuals who we thought had great potential as the next leader at the high school. From there, the ten individuals came down to five individuals. And at that point, we asked the content department chairs at the high school, as well as our assistant principals, and our athletic director, coordinator, K-12 and student activities, to join us for the next round of interviews. And so then, from that round of interviews, we took all that feedback, and we held what we called the circuit interviews. Board of Education, as you know, you were present that night, though not really participating, but really going from room to room, as our top three candidates were interviewed by, again, our stakeholder groups of parents, students, classified staff members, certificated staff members, and the district administrative team. And following those interviews, Board of Education, the central office staff took all of the feedback that we collected, and are making for you this evening the recommendation that Dr. Laura Hebert would be considered for the next principal at Twinsburg High School. I'd like to ask Laura to please come forward for the community's first look of you. Super excited. Everyone, this is Dr. Laura Hebert. And just a few things about Dr. Hebert's vita here. Dr. Hebert is currently the principal at Lloyd Seabird High School in Chesterfield, Virginia, where she's held that position for the last seven years. Prior to that, she was assistant principal at Monakin High School and the dean of students at Manchester High School, which were also both in Chesterfield, Virginia. Dr. Hebert taught social studies in both Virginia and in Ohio. And interestingly enough, she's not always been a career educator. For a moment, she took a pause where she was employed by Rockwell International as an industrial engineer. And that will go a long way with our STEM and STEAM initiatives here in our school district. Dr. Hebert holds a Bachelor of Science in Education degree from the Ohio State University, a Master of Education degree from Ashland University, and a Doctorate of Education from the Virginia Polytechnic Institute. Board of Education, I am absolutely delighted, and I think on behalf of our community, very proud to recommend to you this evening for your consideration, Dr. Laura Hebert as the next principal at Twinsburg High School.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm thrilled. I'm glad you're here. For one, it's good to see you here. Last time I saw you, which I really didn't see you, you were on a video screen, you know, participating in the gauntlet of interview people, people interviewing you. And as someone who's been in education a long time myself, over twenty-five years, I have to say that I was very impressed with your background, very impressed with your passion for what you do. That came through very clear to me. We got overwhelming feedback from all of the groups that had an opportunity to speak with you and ask questions, and I think we all came away with the same impression. So, you know, you've got some big shoes to fill. Mrs. Tringold was terrific. We'll miss her greatly, but I can't think of someone more qualified and more fitting to come and step in and fill those shoes, and also welcome you to our community in Twinsburg High School.
I also want to speak briefly just on the process. And I think the fact that, you know, we speak a lot about stakeholders and keeping everybody involved, and we've mentioned it, you know, for the past few months in regards to HB 512, you know, this was truly an opportunity where the administration and the administrative team, you know, got together, and truly every single person was involved in this. And this was not a decision that was made by one individual or a group of individuals. You know, the recommendation, you know, after seeing the process, you know, that was described and wanted, that you wanted to bring forward, and that actually was executed, you know, I truly feel that, you know, all stones were turned over, everybody was involved, everybody had a voice, and I truly appreciate the process, because I think that's a great, a great way to bring an important hire to the district. So, so thank you very much for everybody involved with the process. You know, I know a lot of late nights, a lot of, you know, adjusting schedules and things like that, but it truly was, you know, something that was very important. So thank you very much.
I appreciate it. After working all day, you've had almost another whole day of work for interviews, and just wanted to welcome you to our community and our schools. And I have a couple of kids at the high school myself, so it's going to be exciting to have you lead our students and our staff. Welcome.
We heard from Mr. Reese when he went through the process, so I think he wants to share scars at some point. She said, "There he is back there." He's reliving a little bit, that's why he's sitting so far back.
Congratulations, again.
All right, Mr. Aho, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Items H1 and 2, pass, 5-0. Congratulations.
First opportunity to razzle and dazzle the community with some pearls of wisdom. Congratulations, and welcome.
Well, I mean, the first obvious thing is every time I've come to Twinsburg, this has happened. In Virginia, this never happens. So I'm somewhat worried. I have to buy a coat. I don't have a coat. So, no, thank you so much. The process was pretty daunting, as you said. But it was good for me as well, because it caused me to reflect and think about, you know, what I was bringing to the table, but also what other people were going to have to help me lead. And so I really do appreciate the process as well. It was also very gratifying when I couldn't come here in person, that you all agreed to work with me and do it through Skype, because that was a, it was a difficult day at my school, and it was great that you allowed me to have that opportunity. I am really, really looking forward to coming to Twinsburg. It is a destination. It's a very different environment than what I'm used to. I'm coming from sixty thousand kids, ten high schools, a lot of red tape, and to just be able to have the opportunity to talk and speak to everybody individually is, is very refreshing, and I'm excited about that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Slurr, if I can just thank the administrative team. They're all here this evening, and they really have been so wonderful in the process, offering opinions and providing feedback, and just the conversation. So guys, thank you so very much for being here and for your support of the process. And I know you'll be all supporting Dr. Hebert as she gets underway. Special thanks to the high school team that is here as well, because shifting into a new leader is a difficult thing. A time of change is sometimes difficult. But I know that Dr. Hebert's going to do well with your family at Twinsburg High School, and I appreciate all that you're going to do to make sure that she feels at home as soon as tomorrow, when she gets to meet our staff for the very first time. And also, Board of Education, I just want to say a word of thanks to the central office staff, Marty, and Denise, and John, and Chad, and more than anything else, Mrs. McKinney, Belinda, for all of their efforts behind the scenes. Process was daunting for the candidates, but I think internally, too, all of the work that they dedicated to making sure that we were laser-focused on finding the right candidate. So, Central Office, thank you so very much for your efforts, too. Very much appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item I, without objection from my colleagues, I'll read items I-1 through 8. I-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of Media Center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. I-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from the Cleveland Clinic Office of Government and Community Relations, 25875 Science Park Drive, AC 121, Beechwood, Ohio, 44122, totaling one hundred dollars. Sharon Mosenko, Twinsburg High School teacher, received the one hundred dollar gift card in recognition of student work submitted for the Cleveland Clinic E-Expressions Program. The award will be used to purchase classroom supplies per the attached exhibit. I-3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following revised job descriptions, as per the attached exhibit. Teacher CBI, teacher special education, teacher academic coach, and teacher special education preschool. I-4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following new job descriptions, as per the attached exhibit. Teacher preschool. I-5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Educational Alternatives for one Twinsburg High School student from March 26, 2018, through June 1, 2018, in the amount of five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. I-6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the program-site agreement with the Alliance for Healthy Youth to provide healthy relationship risk avoidance education for RB Chamberlain Middle School and Twinsburg High School for the 2018-2019 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. Item I-7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education directs the superintendent to approve on an as-needed basis an expulsion appeal hearing designated for the Board of Education for the 2017-2018 school year. Lindsay F. Gringo, Lindsay F. Gingo, Lindsay Gingo Law, LLC, Summit One, 4700 Rockside Road, Suite 440, Independence, Ohio, 44131, at an hourly rate of two hundred and thirty dollars plus mileage at the rate of fifty-five cents per mile. This is a general fund expense. Item I-8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the revised administrative salary schedule, effective July 30, 2018, per the attached exhibit. Have a motion to accept items I-1 through 8.
So moved.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis? As always, we appreciate the donations, so thank you to the Cleveland Clinic for that one hundred dollar gift card to be used for classroom supplies. Any other discussion? Mr. Aho, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Item I-9, whereas Twinsburg Industrial Properties is seeking to construct a new four-hundred-and-four-thousand-square-foot building for O'Reilly Auto Enterprises, LLC, at the site of the former Chrysler stamping plant in the Cornerstone Business Park, valued at an estimated initial investment of approximately sixty-five million dollars, within the boundaries of an existing community reinvestment area that has been duly created and approved pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 3735. And whereas the project is expected to be completed by July 1, 2019, and is expected to create a significant amount of full-time and part-time permanent job opportunities with a new annual payroll of eleven million dollars. And whereas the company is seeking a tax incentive to assist with financing the expansion in the way of a fifty percent abatement of the value of the new construction for fifteen years. And whereas the city of Twinsburg has provided the board with notice concerning its proposed abatement of the project prior to formal adoption of a resolution approving an abatement as required by Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.83. And whereas the board recognizes that the city of Twinsburg encourages economic development within the area designated as the community reinvestment area, and that the proposed project will benefit the city and the community. And whereas this abatement is subject to revenue sharing with the district in accordance with the income tax revenue sharing agreement with the city. And whereas, to the best of its ability, the board desires to cooperate with the city's efforts to promote and encourage economic development while balancing the best interests of the Twinsburg City School District and the resulting tax revenues generated from the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District, Summit County, Ohio, that Section 1, the board approves of a fifty percent real property tax exemption for fifteen years under the community reinvestment area program with respect to all real property improvements constructed as part of the project and as described in the tax exemption application submitted to the city of Twinsburg, and approves a community reinvestment agreement between and among the city and the company, providing for such real property tax exemption. Section 2, this board finds and determines that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the board, and that all deliberations of this board, and if any committees that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption. Have a motion to accept item I-9.
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis? I just want to touch base quickly. If you remember, last year, the city and this board, after a long effort, you know, and we came to an agreement recognizing a community reinvestment area tax abatement agreement. And this is the first property that will fall under that agreement. And I just, you know, it was, it was a good thing for the city and the school board to come to an agreement last year. And I'm looking forward to, you know, this new business entering town. And I think, you know, the agreement that we reached last year was very fair for both sides, allowed the city to, you know, actively pursue a larger economic base, you know, for its tax revenues, as well as, you know, building some infrastructure, and still gave the district the ability to collect on, you know, some revenues that, one, we would not have seen if this property never was developed. So when you see a property tax abatement come through for fifty percent, that is fifty percent of the new building assessment. So, you know, anytime that the district and the city give a tax abatement, you know, we hear a lot of things about, you know, we're losing money. We're actually going to be getting more money than we would be if that property sat as it currently sits. I want the community to understand that, because there's a lot of misinformation when it comes to abatement. So, you know, the agreement that we reached with the city last year, and Mr. Felber, you were part of it as well as the
Explained very well.
Superintendent Powers and Mr. Welker. You know, I mean, it was a very long process, but we wanted to make sure that when we did this, that the board and the city came to an agreement that was both fair for everybody, and was not, was not hindering their ability to bring business into the district, and was not, you know, was not financially, you know, impacting us in a negative manner. So I'm happy that this is the first, hopefully many more, and looking forward to it. I welcome O'Reilly Enterprises to the community, and look forward to seeing that building go up, and looking forward to, you know, reaping the benefits of this agreement, so.
Very well said. What's good for the schools, what's good for the community, what's good for the city. And Norm's sitting back thinking, how many internships are there? Go to the Twinsburg Academy, but there's a lot of jobs coming in there.
Any other discussion on item I-9? Mr. Aho, if you please call a roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Slurratt?
Yes.
We got a miscellaneous? Any of my colleagues have any miscellaneous?
Pancake flipping contest on April 15.
Pancake flipping contest, yes.
We have a first home track meet for the high school tomorrow that was supposed to occur yesterday and supposed to happen because of the weather. So we'll see what it turns out to be like tomorrow.
Mrs. Powers, any? I just want to congratulate again, Dr. Hebert. You have a large shoes to fill, but you have a tremendous staff at the high school that, you know, I'm sure will welcome you and are looking forward to working with you and bringing you up to speed. And again, thank you to everybody that assisted with the process. I, you know, it was a long time. I think it was a, a good exercise, and I think it got us, you know, the best, the best, you know, candidate that we could get. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Welcome to Ohio. I promise you that the weather does change at some point in time. We've got about July, July 1 through about July 7, and then, you know, we'll, we'll be good to go, so. If anybody, nobody has any other further miscellaneous? We do have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion that the Board enters into an executive session at 7:51 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees and the discipline of a student as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second? Any discussion? Mr. Aho, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Slurratt?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
And I do not see a need for any action to continue after we reconvene. So thank you very much. The Board is now in executive session.